I'd like to now call the order, the Culpeper County Planning Commission April meeting. We welcome everyone here this evening. The first order business is approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Second item is approval of our minutes for our March 12th meeting. Chair entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, they will be put to record. I don't know if we actually, I can't remember whether we done this last time or not, but want officially welcome John Cooley as our, you know, planning and zoning director, sir. And your honeymoon last, how long is it supposed to last?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, well, I missed that last time then. But we welcome your board and we know that it's a lot that's going to have to be learned, a lot that's going to have to be dealt with, a lot of adjustments that's going to have to be made. But you got Neil Drumheller there with you, Harrison back there and Pam, but most of all, you got Morgan, okay? So you got everything covered, okay? All right, now, first item on the agenda, new business. There's no old business, so new business, Neil.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case U 2250-24-1. It's a request by Jacob Plutonic for a conditional use permit to expand the operations at Culpeper Recycling to allow for municipal solid waste, MSW, per Article 7.1B-2-3.2 and in accordance with Article 17, conditional use permits of zoning ordinance. The property is owned HI heavy industrial and is located off of Brandy Road Route 15 in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on tax map 42 parcel 12A. This case was deferred by the Planning Commission on March 12th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, based on information provided by the Culpeper County Office of Environmental Services, staff offers the following for the Planning Commission's review. The above referenced special use permit request is for a solid waste transfer station accepting and processing municipal solid waste, MSW. In addition to the special use permit application, the applicant will have to apply for a permit by rule, PBR, from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for a solid waste transfer station in accordance with 9VAC 20-81 to operate the facility. The applicant provided supplemental materials on March 18th, 2025, and some actually just this afternoon. Environmental Services staff requested the applicant provide additional information on the following items to support their special use permit application. One was a preliminary site plan, provide a scaled site plan showing the facility boundaries, setback, material storage, and storage areas for trailers loaded with municipal waste that compiles with, complies with the siting requirements in 9VAC 20-81. That was received at 3:30 this afternoon. Staff was, both myself and the zoning administrator were in a meeting until about 4:20. We didn't even see it till probably 5:30. We didn't, we just didn't get in our email and see it, so we have not had a chance to review that. They did confirm the operating hours on Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Wait a minute. I can't even read, 6:12, yeah, to 6:00 PM. Provide information on the ultimate disposal location for all facility-generated waste. They provided that. And they also provide the truck routes in and out of Culpeper County for loaded and unloaded transfer trailers. In addition, staff would, depending on the recommendation made by the Planning Commission, if they choose to approve the special use permit, we would like these nine items added to the approval. The applicant's facility shall comply with Virginia Administrative Code 9VAC 20-81 Solid Waste Management Regulations. All facilities generated waste residues, including when limited to residues and bypass materials, shall not be delivered to the Culpeper County Solid Waste Transfer Station. The Culpeper County Transfer Station does not accept any refuse municipal solid waste, construction demolition waste, or materials generated or collected outside Culpeper County. The facility shall not divert, bypass, or redirect any municipal solid waste, construction demolition debris, or refuse to the Culpeper County Solid Waste Transfer Station. The maximum daily capacity of municipal solid waste accepted and processed is 600 tons per day. Operating hours are limited to Monday through Saturday, 0600 to 1800 hours as requested. All transfer trailers going to and leaving the facility shall use Business 29 to Route 29 bypass to Route 3 or Route 15 or Route 29 Business to Ira Hoffman Lane to Route 522. Transfer trailers shall travel on VDOT truck routes and not on Main Street. Transfer trailers or storage containers containing municipal solid waste shall be tarped at all times while on-site to prevent litter from escaping. Applicants shall provide enough queuing space to prevent truck traffic from backing up onto Business Route 29, and the applicant shall provide adequate prevention measures to prevent litter from leaving the site at this time. Because we did not get all of our information we're requesting in a timely manner, staff is not in support of this application at this time and does recommend denial of the special use permit.
Okay, thank you very much, John.
Yes, sir.
And Neil, do we have any questions for staff at this time? We can do that before we hear from the applicant. Okay, Ms. Thorn?
I have a couple of questions on this list. And number two, how are you going to be able to regulate if out of the area trucks bring in debris at that property? How do you regulate that? Just as a question. We can't, can we?
I'm going to look to Mr. Howard to help us out with that.
All right.
Hi, Paul Howard, Director of Environmental Services. It is difficult. The only way we can regulate it is inspections at the transfer station. If we have reason to suspect anything, we can't ask people what came from. Or spot inspections, yes.
Okay. How about, how are you, number four, how are you going to regulate the amount of waste accepted on a daily basis, like 600 tons per day? How do you regulate that?
We don't, we don't have any reporting on how much goes in per day. The only reporting that's publicly available is reported to the DEQ under their permit. There's a solid waste information assessment report that all permittees have to deliver to DEQ. That's the only material or record that we have to judge that by. We have no way of knowing how much comes in there a day.
And how often, can you speak louder?
Sorry?
How, how often do they come out to check?
That's reported once per year to DEQ.
Once a year they would check?
What's reported to them. They can come out and check at their discretion, the DEQ can. That's under their permit, but as far as what's reported, it's once per year.
Okay. Then number seven, as far as everything being tarped, can they, who would regulate? I mean, I've seen state troopers giving tickets to trucking companies. Is that who would have to regulate or who would regulate if they're being tarped?
It would be a visual inspection by the zoning administrator if trucked or trailers are not tarped while they're on-site at the close of business. That would be the only thing. The trucks that are on the road by law have to be tarped. So that would be a state police inspection, but anything on-site would be at the zoning administrator.
Okay. Has the current, I guess I want to call them discrepancies been resolved with that applicant on other issues? Are they in compliance with the rules and regulations that we're supposed to be operating under?
This site is in compliance. They have a MRF permit on there right now, and that is in compliance.
So with the county regulation? Well, this site is the red dot, but all of the property there in blue, is that?
I'm not familiar with what's going on in the part around it. This application's for the area that's in red.
Yes, for staff's purposes, but I'm asking for an applicant's purposes as a taxpayer, if they are in compliance with all of our other regulations.
I don't know, I'm not, I don't enforce any of those regulations on the other parcels.
That's all I have.
Go ahead, Ms. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For staff, you mentioned, well, in the, your letter dated the 3rd of April, you carry forward the nine conditions that the Environmental Services had provided. In the case analysis from when we first saw this, there are nine other suggested conditions that are, that are different than the nine conditions provided or suggested by Environmental Services. So my question is, do those original nine conditions carry forward? Or are we not worried about those now because we now have an updated letter and we're going to use the conditions suggested by Environmental Services?
I wish I could give you an answer to that. I'm not sure. I don't know the original, or I don't remember. I'm not sure which one it is, but I can't answer. I don't know.
There's not a whole lot of overlap between the nine conditions from the original and then the updated, so anyway, I was just wondering if, you know, if it's, both of those are going to apply.
We would have to make them part of it, probably.
Okay.
Great.
Yes.
One question for Mr. Howard. On your condition number eight, where it talks about providing enough queuing space to prevent truck traffic, do we know how many trucks? And maybe it's a question for the applicant, but how many trucks are going to be coming in and out from, from what it was before versus what it is now? Is it going to be the same amount, exact trucks? Is, are they going to be using different dump trucks or things like that to haul material in, so therefore you're going to get more traffic? Or what's the, what's the thought there, do you know?
The applicant may add to this, but the current facility is permitted at 1,200 tons per day. They're breaking it into 600 tons per day of commercial demolition debris and 600 tons per day of MSW. So the overall tonnage to the facility is not changing under the permit. So it will still be 1,200 tons per day. As far as timing and what kind of trucks and everything, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking, you know, one, the changing of the use may use different trucks, so it could increase the amount of truck traffic that would be entering and exiting the site. So I'd want to understand that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Let's see, one thing also, what determines long-term or permanent store? Permanent store? What determines that, you know, we say there should be no long-term or permanent, but what is, what is long-term?
For storage of transfer trailers. The only, the DEQ basically regulates the transfer trailers once they have the trash in them and they're stored on-site. They have to clean their floor or their building at the end of the day. But whether or not they're stored there overnight or two days, they have to be in a container that's covered that meets the solid waste regulations, but there's no... Yeah, that's the purpose of tarping them to keep, that's why the tarping is required. That helps that a lot.
Just wanted to know that we were there, okay.
I have one more question. Can I ask you one more?
Go ahead.
So the size of that red square, has that changed? Because I'm getting some verbal that it's now bigger or it's not bigger and I don't have it written somewhere. How big is that red square now?
That red square is the, still the 2.35 acres, I believe. That's the current size of the parcel. The applicant has indicated that they're going to adjust the boundary to make it larger, but that's...
We don't know that today, what it is.
We got a site plan this afternoon, as Mr. Cooley mentioned.
Okay, so we don't know yet, okay. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The applicant, representative for the applicant, come forth, give your full name for the record, please.
Jacob Plutonic, Culpeper Recycling.
Okay.
2.5 is the, is the boundary survey for the boundary line adjustment. So from 2.35 to 2.5 acres.
Because of the setback requirements?
Because of the setback requirement, yeah. The truck traffic doesn't change, the trucks, the tonnage is the same, the same amount of trucks, and the same amount of tonnage goes basically in all of the trucks, whether they're a trash truck or a roll-off truck, the tonnage is very similar. It's not open to the public, so there's no, no public, it's all, you know, commercial. Culpeper Recycling there, that's our operation. We've been in business 20 years in the county now. Notice of violation on the surrounding property. We have our first notice of violation in 20 years, and that is under litigation. So we are working our way through it.
When do you expect that to be resolved?
You know, it's going to Circuit Court, so...
Well, this year though, or next year, or you don't know?
It's going to Circuit Court. I couldn't, you know, it could be 50 years in the way things are going with, you know, with the court systems, who knows? I couldn't tell you. But that's my operation. It's been built, it's been permitted, 1,200 tons per day MRF, CND, and in operation permitted by the DEQ, concrete columns, floor drains, curbs, you know, we load out, we load, separate everything, it's not that big an operation, 5,000 square feet permitted operation on two and a half acres. Next one, please. There you go. 12A is our parcel, and we are doing that, see all the dotted lines there on 12A? It's kind of curvy and all that, so we've, we've squared that up. Here's your, here's your version of the squared up version. It was, you know, it's just a square now instead of, instead of those curvy lines going around there. And then we're talking about 2.5 acres instead of 2.3 acres. So it is minimal to meet the, to meet the boundary line, minimal change. Boundary line adjustment, and I own all the surrounding property around it, and we have the distance to nearest adjacent businesses is, you know, way, way above what's required, 740 feet, 615 feet, all those are, it's really, all you need is 50 feet to the, to a surrounding home or surrounding business, and we meet that hands down. Already industrial, formerly M2, I believe, in Culpeper, now HI.
Okay.
So, next one, please. There's our, there's our entrance there in the red all-weather access road. We have a deceleration, existing deceleration lane on Route Business 29 there, turn lane that goes the length of our property. The yellows, the queuing areas in the back. You can see our transfer station right there, 5,000 square foot. And again, we're talking about parcel 12A in, within the 42 parcel. Route 15 is up top there. Again, that's just another look at that, at the all-weather access road and truck, and all of this stuff is in the back and the elevation of it, you'll never see it from the road, you'll never see from the front building, you'll never see any of this from Business 29. We have, you know, landscaped, extensive landscape stuff in the long, along Business 29, and we have our own entranceway, our own deceleration lane, and we have our own queuing area right there. And, again, that's another good look at it, yep. That's the same, you know, same thing, multiple, multiple different facility entrance right there. The netting is litter control, so the, you know, the, the transfer station has netting all around it to hold on to the litter control, and then you're required by DEQ to tarp all of your stuff, so it is a, it has all the tractor-trailers that, that are loaded up with the trash will be tarped and secure before they, before they, while they're on the facility, while they're in the operating area of the facility. You know, we, I pride ourselves on keeping a clean operation. We run, you know, mulching soils around the next, the surrounding property, and we can't have trash or any of that stuff in the mulcher topsoil, so we will, we will most certainly keep it clean. This is my DEQ permit already done. You know, I have 1,200-ton MRF facility, and this is a, this, what I'm asking for is a six, is 600 tons of the 1,200 to be a, to be for MSW, and it is a simple permit, and it's nothing, we don't have to rebuild the building, we don't have to do, we have to get, you know, DEQ approval, but first we need to get through the county here and get that approved. And it is a piece of paper adjustment.
Okay.
Questions, please?
That's it?
That's it.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay.
All right. All right. I did. I'd just say, in reference to the residue and the floor drains and the tank, is that something that's already carefully regulated by DEQ?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And this simple permit, the change in permit provides no additional, no change in that facility?
No, sir. No change in our facility, and it, and it's, and it's third-party, it's taken care of third-party, you know, they, and they have requirements to meet too from the DEQ as well. So we're, you know, we're, you know, monitored a lot on that. And then we have, you know, a ton of DEQ permits and discharge permits for the entire parcel that, you know, that we can't mess up.
Okay. And just to be clear, so the activity that will change on this parcel has no bearing on the, the parcel with the BZA situation at all?
Correct.
One doesn't affect the other and vice versa?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Different parts on it? Yes, ma'am.
So the discharge water is going into some kind of a tank there on-site? And then where does that go?
The, what's the name of the third-party?
They come and pick it up, third-party?
They, they come and pick it up, and then they, they take it to their leach aid places and their, their, you know, I don't know how they clean it and what they do with it. They get paid a lot of money to do it.
Okay. All right, so when you identified this 2.5 acre parcel now, why do you not do the whole site as, I don't understand why this is just...
Because, because this, you want to control this. This is, you know, this is an MRF facility, this is, you know, got CND and, and trash, and you don't want it all over the place, and it'll be a mess. You want it in a consolidated, small parcel where you can control it. And, and I don't want it all over the entire, the entire parcel, and it's not needed.
It's not needed, yeah?
It's not needed, and it's, and you want it, you know, I've been around junkyards my whole life, and the more you, the more room you get, the more you're spread out, and if you can consolidate and keep it in a, in a small area, it can be well-managed and well-cleaned and well-maintained. The more room you get, the more you're spread out, the worse it gets.
Does this activity compete with our county?
No, this, this, this is actually, I mean, your county's in dire need of our services, and, and it does not compete with your county.
It's in dire need?
Dire need.
Okay, so, and then there's a facility across the road, they take some of the, and it's still not enough capacity?
Still not enough capacity, and it's in your long-range plan as well. This facility is in your long-range trash plan. We have a note for...
You have a trash plan?
We have a trash plan.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Plutonic, you obviously know the trash provisions quite well. And I appreciate your, your desire to, to help the county out with this. There's a dynamic tension between the, the health and safety and general welfare of all Culpeper citizens and, and individual rights. And sometimes that dynamic tension, it needs to be alleviated. You have, government exists, you know, the Planning Commission Board of Supervisors, DEQ, Environmental Services and so on, exist to help mitigate that dynamic tension between individual rights and the citizens. Seems to me there's still a lot of tension around this, and I'm trying to figure out why. And I would say there, when there's a conflict and that kind of tension, it seems it's incumbent upon the applicant, this is my perception of it, to try to alleviate that tension by meeting the requirements of those organizations that are set forth to help mitigate that with the citizens. Obviously, citizens don't have time to do that, and they have a government to do it. Why is there tension, and how can we alleviate that so we can move forward?
I mean, we've, we've answered the mail on everything multiple times.
Right.
And, you know, it is, I mean, everything is, everything is permitted already, the building's been built, we've been in operation, you know, this is just an additional permit to the one we're having, to the one we already have.
But yet staff and Environmental Services have both put requirements that seem to have not been met and therefore have denied it.
Well, you know, nowadays, you get a chance, you know, staff gets a chance to, you know, to put more conditions on it than, than once, than once existed. The traffic, you know, not going down Main Street, that's a, that's a very reasonable request to, to, from, you know, from, that from Paul. You know, we don't want to go down Main Street anymore than, than he wants us to go down Main Street. You know, our hours of operation are, you know, are daylight, you know, basically daylight hours of operation, that's, seems reasonable enough to me. I don't know what the, you know, the boundary, operating within the boundary, keeping it small, I like that, that's personally the way I would do it anyhow. I don't really want to expand it.
And let me, let me jump in just, just for a second too, and, and I can understand Mr. Wilk's questioning about that, you know, knowing that something is there, but our decision has to be made on documentation and, and everything that is, that is here. And the situation itself, whatever tension or whatever it might have been, that's between you and then the agencies and all that, that you're dealing with. When you, when you come to us, we are, we just expected everything to be happy and ready to move or not move because of compliance, and that's what we are, what we're here for. But we thank you for attempting to address the question that, that was asked, so. Is it any other? And, Mr. Wilk, is that, that was your question, just to try to get a feel of it?
Yes and no. I mean, there's, with that tension, I mean, I want to see this go forward, and I'd like to see help to make it happen.
Mr. Wilk, you know, my, you know, there, there may be, there may be tension, but we have complied with everything. We have complied, and we have answered the mail multiple times on every response. Now, whether or not you guys have received that, and, and...
So sitting, sitting in my position, obviously I have limited information, which is why I asked the question.
I understand, I understand.
Right, right.
I understand.
So I want to be able to, with confidence, say, let's go forward to this. It seems like a good thing, but we have this, this, I guess, elephant in the room that doesn't seem to go away.
Sure.
And I'd like to see it gone away so we can go forward with confidence, so. I bring it up for that reason.
This is the second time we've been forward.
Again, that, that won't be what we need to make our decision. But that's something that they have to, the agencies and all, they do have to work that out, but that is not part of us making our decision.
Is it reasonable to expect that to be worked out at some level before we get here?
That's, you know, again, if everything is compliance and we got the conditions and those things need to be complied to, once he leaves us, we're just referring to the board or recommending to the board what we have seen here, and if not in compliance with some documentation or something like that for some reason, then we need to specify that, and we can make that in, in one of our conditions.
So am I reading this right from what I've heard today, that we have nine recommendations that haven't all been met, and have two sets of recommendations, one of them...
Conditions, right.
That haven't been met?
Those have, those nine have been met.
Okay.
You said those were?
They have been met.
Yeah, but, yes, sir. Okay, let me...
Ask, ask Paul the conditions, he's, you know, he knows.
Yeah, and that's where that part of it needs to be actually, you know, worked out too, other than what we have before, but...
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the nine items that are being referred to, we, the staff, would actually like those made part of...
Yes.
The recommendation.
Yes.
The only item that has not been addressed fully, because we didn't, staff did not receive it until late this afternoon and had not had a chance to review it, is the preliminary site plan, which I, you know, he showed it in his presentation. We do have it, we haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
And we have asked for this, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So I, I don't feel staff is dragging our feet, we're not throwing extra things out there.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, I'm not here to ask the Planning Commission to do anything. You know, it's, I'm not here to ask the Planning Commission to do anything.
Right.
I will say it has been submitted, we do have it, hasn't been reviewed.
Yes.
But it's literally four weeks until the board meeting. So however you all want to proceed,
Yes.
I mean, staff can, staff can make it work.
That's right. I got you. We understand.
Again, we're talking about a site plan that has already been approved for the MRF. And we are doing a boundary line adjustment of .2 whatever acres to tenths of an acre on that, on that site plan. So that site plan has been approved by the county and its staff and Paul's office and DEQ as well. It has been approved. Alright, and it's been approved years ago, months ago.
And we, and that we do understand. And in this process, and just like the question that Mr. Wilk's had was, you know, whatever the little items are, whether or not the staff is pleased with, you know, what they have received. And it seems like there's one piece of information at this particular point that still needs to be reviewed. So to me, it's a possibility that it wouldn't stop us from moving forward, you know, with it. But it seems like a lot of diffusion has happened, and we've gotten a lot of the information that we need. In these conditions, you've seen the conditions, so, you know, you don't, I'm sure, don't have any problem with what we have here, so. But that's it? Anyone have it for who?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
So, I guess, one of the questions I had was the storage on site.
Yes, sir.
Trucks and things like that, no, the tar and stuff like that. I know there was a question from staff about long-term storage and temporary storage, things like that. What would you say the temporary storage is going to be on site? And how long would that truck sit there? And you limit the amount of time that particular truck?
Yeah, it's mandated by the DEQ, and I don't, I don't know the timeframe off the top of my head, but it's like, I mean, it's like 10 days or something. And it has to be within your operating area, and it has to be completely tarped or inside. It's something along those lines.
So you have an industrial permit?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, already.
And so there was a leave that the equipment would be environmentally protected?
Yes, sir. Already in place, yes, sir. An approved site plan already in place for this facility?
I think you have an approved site plan.
For the MRF.
But they don't have a preliminary site plan that you submit as part of special exception? I think that's...
It's the same site plan.
Well, it'd be different. You propose a different site plan. So I don't, if you did have it, I don't know why it was just submitted today. Why wasn't it submitted?
Well, maybe with the boundary line adjustment on the .2 acres, but it is the same, and the building's been built for, you know, site plan approval and building and engineering and the whole nine yards. It's been, it's been in operation in that.
As part of a special exception, you know, you have to show environmental features, water bodies, but when you install management, that's on that site plan?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
We haven't seen that, so it's hard for us to believe something we haven't seen. So it would have been nice if it was deferred previously that you would have gotten that as part of this application.
I don't think you can build a building without a site plan.
No, not a special exception plan. You have to do a special exception plan when you submit it. So you have a pre-application meeting, you bring that plan to you at that meeting, and then that's what gets submitted as a special exception, and then you review it. Because the intent would be to have that upfront. And the other item I noticed was DDOT had made a comment about warrant analysis. Do you have a transportation consultant on that you spoke with about that?
Traffic study, and Lee Baines is our engineer that we've been working with, Lee. But we haven't done anything different.
Because I guess what I was looking at was crashed at it and looking at rear collisions?
We don't, and we haven't. Yeah, we haven't had, we've, I mean, over 20 years, we've had two maybe crashes in that area. Tom, can Tom speak to that? Is it two about me?
They're always coming from the town and never from the direction that they'll approach our property entering the de-separation lane.
Yeah, those accidents don't occur in that corridor.
Coming over the hill, coming off the rush. Because I think they were asking for a warrant analysis for the left turn, coming from town. So I didn't know if you've looked at that. And the reason I say that is because if you end up leaving right away and affected other properties, that would essentially be what that application is.
Yep. You know, that whole corridor needs a facelift, you know, throughout there. And, you know, I want to be part of that, I'm going to be, you know, I own a pretty good section of road drainage through there. And I'm looking forward to getting the acceleration lanes and getting the things, getting it right. But I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, change that whole corridor from 29 to all the way to town. You know, get it, get it four lanes, you know.
Okay. Alright, any other questions?
I have one for Mr. Howard.
You can.
Okay.
So the applicant referenced a trash plan. There's several of us, I think clearly have no idea that that exists. So can you review that? Because, you know, the applicant's saying we're in dire need of it. We have a letter here from an independent engineer saying that we're good till 2042.
The plan he's referencing is called a solid waste management plan. All localities in Virginia have to prepare one. They update it every five years, and that's submitted to DEQ. What you do is you try to project your needs for solid waste disposal. They ask you to do it for certain periods of five, 10, 15, 20 years just to make sure you have enough either landfill capacity or transfer station capacity or something for you to dispose of your trash as a locality. The county operates a transfer station, which is available to Culpeper County residents or Culpeper County businesses. So that's our mandate is to provide trash disposal for them. The two facilities, or the facility that you're talking about tonight is a private facility that certainly could be open to Culpeper businesses, but to Culpeper public is not served there. So in some respects, we have different missions. We have to take anything that a business or a resident brings to us. Private facilities can take whoever they want, that's a prerogative because it's a private business. We have enough capacity to meet the demand of Culpeper County going forward at our transfer station that can change, but we are prepared to deal with what comes into Culpeper from Culpeper, not from outside areas. So that's what the plan is for. Our waste volumes are certainly influenced by businesses. We can't control who comes to us, we have to take what shows up. So the residents come to us, some businesses come to us, and our trash fluctuates depending upon when a business decides to come or go. Sometimes they leave and trash goes down, or sometimes they show up and it goes up. Because we can't mandate that they bring it to us. So a facility like this could take waste away from the county's transfer station, which is not a problem. We did not want to include, one of the reasons for the provision about diverting or bypassing or sending residues to us is that if this facility is accepting trash from either out of the county or elsewhere, which is certainly available to private facilities, that they don't send that to us because we don't want the additional burden and do not accept trash from outside Culpeper. So that's the real purpose of that requirement. But the solid waste management plan, that's the purpose of it, and there is capacity within Culpeper.
So adding another facility is not part of our current plan?
Our plan doesn't say we will add or we will not add. It's focused on our facility, not how many private ones you have. You can have as many private ones as you want. Our facility can meet the county's needs.
So our...
And that's what that's geared towards.
Our plan, to just kind of simplify, our current plan, we're saying that, yes, we have plenty of capacity to meet our county residents' and business need for years to come. We are not in a dire situation.
Right.
Thank you.
It does reference the private facilities, they are documented and they are included in the plan. But we can't control if they want to take our trash or not, so we have to assume that they're not here.
Okay. Thank you very much. You can have a seat, sir.
Other question, one more question for staff.
Okay. Go ahead.
First question for you guys is, in particular, on comparing the old conditions with the new conditions. All lighting will conform with Article 32, outdoor lighting. Is there a reason in particular that that was no longer a concern? Does this go round?
Mr. Chairman, the Article 32 was included just as a precaution, just to restate originally. It's my understanding that the new suggested nine items replace the original ones.
Okay.
The Article 32 would be dictated by code under a site plan, but oftentimes that's just reiterated. Ms. Burton?
And then I guess my second question is, how would staff proceed in needing to study this preliminary site plan? Would we end up tying a condition, not just that it be reviewed, but we need something to occur with it, you need to have a finding? So I'm just curious if there's a way to create a condition for this to proceed, allowing you to review that site plan, but we don't know the outcome of that? You haven't reviewed it, right?
Understood.
Is there a way to frame your goal?
Understood, Mr. Burton. I believe that the word "site plan" is being kicked around incorrectly. What I received today at 3:30 was, you know, more of a concept plan and shows a boundary line adjustment. And the ask, as it were, to the applicant was to more closely define the area for the conditional use permit. And just at first glance, it appears that he has done so. You know, I don't, I can't, I haven't read the fine print per se, but I don't see it as an issue as long as, you know, the condition from before that the applicant defined the area for the CUP is included. Site plan is overkill because that's not what we're really talking about, it's a concept plan.
Concept. Alright, I'll leave my question there for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bright?
Well, just to follow on on that, so for staff, the only thing that would be keeping you from recommending approval now is the review of the preliminary site plan that you got late today. Everything else would lead you toward recommending approval? Because you were supportive last time we saw this with the original case analysis.
And this? Right now, that is it. Looking at the concept plan, site plan, whatever you want to call it, that, I mean, we got it late today. So, you know, I don't want to sit here and go, let's look at it right now. But for all intents and purposes, in looking at it, they have added, they've done the BLA, the boundary line adjustment on the plan. They do show that the 50-foot setback for all activities within this type of facility, they show that. I think by, you know, tomorrow, early afternoon, you know, we should be able to hammer that out. I really don't see an issue, other than not being able to see it and study it before we came up here. We looked at it, sure, we looked at it, but we didn't study it. So, I mean, if, I don't know how the Planning Commission feels about a motion that, you know, I don't even want to say tentative approval or, you know, tentative approval based on staff's review and approval of the site plan or the concept plan, you know, before the board supervisors' meeting, which we would do tomorrow.
Yeah, and if you review it as it goes en route from us to the board supervisors, if you find errors with that site plan, then you can recommend disapproval against the board based on that.
Yes, sir.
Now, if we were to defer again, just so, to give you another month to look at the site plan, what does that do for the timeline for the applications?
I, did we defer once? I mean, has it been deferred once? I think that that request would have to go to the board of supervisors
Yeah, okay.
to defer, wouldn't it? Again? Okay. The attorney has just told me the applicant could request referral, but we cannot.
Well, I'll just tell you, the change in use makes sense to me to take half of the current 1,200 pounds a day and make it municipal waste. And if the, if staff can look at the site plan and make sure it's up to some before it goes to the board, I mean, to me, that seems to be a reasonable way to go instead of dragging it out anymore.
Okay. Now, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Clentik? Is that your name? Am I pronouncing that right?
Can we look back at the preliminary concept plan?
Just want to, just to clarify, it's not open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's only going to be, what kind of trash?
Commercial.
Commercial trash, coming from anywhere, everywhere?
No, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be commercial trash, basically within Culpeper.
Okay, but it can come from other places?
Yes, sir.
Okay, up to the 600 or 600?
600 tons, yes.
600 tons. And then when that trash is brought in, you, a transfer station, you basically bring it, pile it into different piles or trucks and take it to other places?
You pile it inside that building.
Okay.
And then you load it onto what's called a walk-in floor truck trailer. So you're basically taking the little, the little front loader trucks or rear loader trucks, and you take that, put it into the walk-in floor of the tractor trailers. And then you take the tractor trailers to the lorton and cinnerary places, or you take it to the landfills in Virginia, multiple landfills.
I know we said that, but just one more time, it's not going to the Culpeper?
It is not going to Culpeper, no.
Okay.
It's not going to Culpeper. And that's our, you know, the dotted line, the proposed boundary line adjustment, the two tenths of an acre allows us to get to operate within our 50-foot of the boundary line of the property line. And basically, you know, towards the top of the page there, all the operation is going to be in the back of the building, in the back of the MRF, and in the MRF itself. And again, you won't see it from Route 29.
Okay. That's good?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we open up the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this application, raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. Come forth and give your full name for the record. Have two minutes.
Two minutes?
After you give your name, then you have two minutes.
John Vennett, attorney at practice locally here for a long time.
Good evening, sir.
And Chairman Reeves, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Commission. You know, we're talking about a lot of details here, but let's step back and look at the big picture. Right across the road, there's a facility that's operating at 4% capacity, 4%. It can meet the needs of the county for decades to come. The landfill is permitted at 475 tons per day, and it's less than half of that typically. So there is existing capacity that is expansive, that can meet the needs of the county for just decades to come. And there's no evidence before you or any factual basis to say otherwise. So why are we here considering, going through all these details, considering a facility that by its nature doesn't help the county? Doesn't generate tax revenue, it's a health hazard, safety hazard because of the road? I have to say, unfortunately, there's been a number of misstatements that have been made to you. I don't think the statement that the county is in dire need of additional capacity has any factual basis whatsoever. And then the statement that there's no problem with the roads, there's been maybe one or two accidents over many years? Well, you have the BDOT information in front of you, and that road is just one accident after another for the whole length of the road. That road is overcapacity, it's failing. It really needs to be four lanes. It's just a MRF that's across the road, that's been approved for 2,500 tons per day. That was approved in 2008. It was a much different situation as to traffic. This is 2025, and the traffic on that road, anyone who looked before or looked after, has to be a multiple of many times. So the data here before you is that you don't need this, don't need it at all. And then the traffic, it's a problem already, and no need to take a chance to make it worse.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. You did pretty good. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Chuck Cherry, and I've worked for AMRF over the years in different capacities. I even ran the MRF for a while. Right now, I'm doing some consulting for them. And they called me when this came up, because I have kind of an odd background. I started in mulch, worked for a company that does composting, we bagged mulch, that's why when I look at that plan, it's kind of like going home, because I love talking about that stuff. But I ran at one point as many as 12 mulch facilities, then I went on to work for Waste Management as a district manager in BFI. And so that's why they called me, they're trying to make sense out of what's going on here. And I will reference the engineer's letter saying that, you know, the capacity of the county site and AMRF together are way more than what you're ever going to need. I mean, I really feel like you're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. The other thing is, based on my experience, you know, being in the mulch business, you know, when you seal that bag and it goes out the door, you're the last person to see it until Susie Homemaker sees it at home and uses it to potter plants. I would be concerned, in my work for BFI, we would not allow waste to come in the same facility that we're doing our compost, because we did both jobs. We did composting, and we bagged mulch and bagged topsoil, but we also transferred waste, and we buried, obviously buried waste, because we're a waste company. We would not allow that to be on the same site. And the reason is that you have vectors, which that's a very polite term for rats, and birds, and other things that are attracted to waste. And I don't care what you do to cover it up, you cannot prevent that from happening, it's going to happen. And so do you want vectors going from a transfer site that's really not needed to a consumer product that's being packaged on-site or very close by? I mean, I would not want that. And, you know, when it comes to, because I've been in both industries before, when it comes to the severity of the things that can happen, okay, mulch is very low and waste is very high. And I'll leave it on that. Waste is, the consequences of failing are much higher than in the mulch business. So thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Good afternoon, I'm Ron Horn, I'm a resident of Culpeper County, been here for 60 years. I talked to you all the other night. You know, I support this, you know, I don't have a problem with the county, I don't have a problem with the update MRF, but the county is growing at a pace that I don't think either one of them can keep up with it, you know. I work for one of the largest haulers, the largest haulers in this market. We bring in 150 ton a day. You know, they say the county takes, right now, they're taking 240 ton a day, you know, we bring in 150 ton a day. We run in the Culpeper market, we take everything to whatever market we take it to, since the county's been upside down on the disposal costs right now. And as a resident, I really look for anything that's going to help us save this million dollars that we lost last year by paying the overage the taxpayers paid. So, you know, having another option is no difference than, you know, not allowing Target to come in Walmarts here or anything, you know, it's an option we need. This location also brings an option that hadn't been discussed tonight, is recycling. It brings the option for a local recycling mix, recyclables, cardboard to be delivered and hauled. No site offers that in Culpeper County. We haul about eight loads a week out of the Culpeper County, out of our market, we have to haul it to Fredericksburg. Our trucks run to Fredericksburg every day to offload in order to reload and haul it to our MRF down in Chester. So having an option to, for all the haulers in this market to have a location to dump their cardboard, to be able to dump their recyclables is another great thing. It also helps the county, you know, we do all the county's recycling at the landfill for them, and we haul it all to Fredericksburg. So it just brings a, brings a better, better choice, and I think the more choices, the better we'll be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You know, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Planning Committee members, those of you watching at home, and those who are behind us. Some of us have the work, and that's the reason why I'm late, but I did listen to it on the way here. Culpeper is not responsible for the surrounding county's garbage. Like many gentlemen have spoke before me, we have more than ample space and, with the transfer station, to satisfy our current needs and as well as our needs going forward. We have many problems in Culpeper, but trash is not one of them. And we need to focus on the things that help Culpeper residents and take care of the residents that we do have, the long-term residents and the residents that just moved here a few years ago. And hauling and responsible for other counties' trash is simply not our responsibility, as well as all the added road damage that will be caused by this added, the amount of traffic. And again, we need to focus on things that would help Culpeper, and this is definitely one that will not help, and actually, it would hurt the quality of life here in Culpeper. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, we've heard a lot of different comments that have been made, and information has been shared, and last statement that was made did make me think a little on the fact that, you know, we really, a lot of these situations that we feel that are not the best, we don't want those in our backyard. But, but just before the last citizen came up and spoke, we were just told that the recycling part goes to Fredericksburg. You know, what we have, we take it and, we have to take it to another area that will take some of these things. So when I listened to the applicant also, and then look at the history on the applicant, and, you know, haven't heard anything really negative, or, you know, that has happened, you know, out there, you know, with this situation. We don't plan for, so much for right now, we plan for the future. And if these, if we already have access at this particular point, it seemed like if we have enough storage for, you know, a time to, a long time period to come, then having more in a safe place, it seemed like it would be something that, in the long run, would be beneficial to us. That road out there, when we look at 29 Business, and we know, we all know, that it needs to be four, you know, four lanes, but we're not the agency to make that decision, unfortunately, because it would already be a yellow brick road by the time you, you know, I would finish with it. But we do, there are things that we see and know that needs to be done, but at the same time, as citizens who might be already, you know, we are for business and all also, and a lot of times, those who do a good job are not only commended but rewarded for their efforts, you know, and how they handle things. Not having this information in a timely fashion, that's something that always get under all of our colleagues, you know, we like this information so that when we come here, we have all the information that we need, and so that we can give the applicant the benefit of the doubt. And hearing from staff and saying to us that, you know, that is the only, only thing that they have at this time that would make them want to, for any reason, hold it up. But there are ways that we can handle that also in our motions that, you know, I think we've already, this is, how many months gone by already for this applicant?
One.
One month. We, it was at the last meeting, and then we met this one. So anyway, that's, you know, where I see it, and I know that it's been some things that, you know, in the air that were, maybe some tension, and, or has been some tension, but, you know, we haven't, you know, that's part of the process, you know, part of the process. And, but I think at this particular point, you know, I'd very much like to see a way that we could move this along with the added condition that we would, that the staff gives the okay, that, that the, what they have received, that last document is there. So, but anyway, I'm only one person, one vote, and, and just wanted to share with you all what my thinking was. So, any other discussion at this time? Okay, Mr. Wilks? Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'm not well, that well-versed at trash removal or mulch production, and so I rely on other people, and I appreciate the forum where we can hear
Yes.
many different views and understandings.
Yes.
So, what was brought up about the vector, the consequence of waste is very high, and I appreciated that perspective, I hadn't heard that, and I wanted to get some more clarification on that. I don't know if Paul, if you're able to answer that at all. But the gentleman said they would not allow waste to come into the same facility as mulch, since the mulch is being sent to a consumer, and the potential for vectors to create problems that would end up in the mulch and potentially harm the health of citizens, is that a concern? Is that something you're aware of, or?
The DEQ permit that they would be operating under has requirements for vector controls for that, or for buzzards, that's the biggest challenge with waste if it's not covered and stuff.
Okay.
I can't speak to whether that's an issue with the mulch or not. I do know that there will be, there is a requirement in DEQ permit for that. That wouldn't be a condition that we could include or enforce or do anything else on.
Is there an industry standard that mulch and waste should not be in the same facility?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's all, thank you.
So, do we have buzzards at the landfill now?
Yes.
At our current, we do. So the people that live near there could then be impacted, because this is closer to lots of businesses, they could be impacted by the buzzards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
But then, Paul, when you have that type of situation, who is the one who actually controls that? Is it DEQ?
You, all you can do is just make sure the loads and stuff are tarped, and make sure everything's covered, to try to keep down on the buzzards. They come before you can even tarp trailers in and out, there's ways you can do, the DEQ does require that you control that through tarping and other stuff. I'm not going to say it's perfect, but they do require
Well, if they only come once a year, it's pretty hard to say that they would be the monitors.
Their inspections are more frequent than that. The cell waste information assessment, which is a report that we get, is once a year, but they do have, inspections are more frequent.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. I think we got you covered here now. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my concern would be is, if we do go forward with approval of this, then we're setting a precedent that we can potentially move projects forward without having site plans submitted and reviewed by Planning Commission prior to approval. So I have concern over that. I also have concern over the transportation side of things. Multiple applicants that we've had before, so we've asked for position paper on transportation, whether it doesn't have to be a full TIA, it just needs to be something that says they've looked at it and evaluated it, because as part of 17.1-1.2, for basis of issuance, we have to see and determine if this could potentially be detrimental to public welfare. And so we have to act on that behalf. I don't have enough information to basically make that decision at this point. So it puts me in that situation, that's where I kind of understand.
I concur.
Okay. And didn't we have this last time? Was this something new? Is this something new? Was this on the application last time?
What?
This situation? Mr. Kilby, what you, what you speaking on?
I was not, I was absent at a funeral, sorry.
Okay, all right. But yeah, I think some of that information was, you know, we were privy to that last time, they didn't change anything on the application in reference to that? Okay, that one thing, okay. I just want to make sure.
As a reminder, I think in the last discussion, the applicant mentioned that the number of trucks in and out a day would basically stay the same between 20 and 30.
Yes.
Maybe that's why it wasn't a big item of discussion.
Yeah, that was, that was it on there too. Okay, anyone else?
I just want to say, I agree with Mr. Kilby and Ms. Thornhill's concerns. You know, there's been adequate time to get that plan in before 3:30 today, it's already had one deferral, you know, we have documentation here, county staff has said that basically there's a problem that doesn't exist, and then between staff's report and Mr. Howard's report here from March 31st, recommending denial, you know, there's, between the two, there's 18 different conditions, and we've had those conversations before about, you know, if you have to condition something that heavily, then clearly it's not a good fit. So from my perspective, on the facts and the data that is provided, this does not serve a need that we have, there is way too many conditions that need to be put on there, there's been ample time to provide the documentation that we've asked for, I cannot support approval of this as is.
Okay. And I understand some of the concerns and all that are before us, and, you know, I look at this like any other application that we've had, you know, come to us before, and if we have, you know, I mean, we did get the last item, and the only concern, because staff did recommend, you know, approval with these conditions that were before us, but, and the only thing they didn't have was the, a document that did show up, yeah, it showed up later, it was 5:30, that, you know, they could, you know, definitely have an opportunity to, to look at before the board meeting that we have. So, but that's where I'm at, and I would be in favor to move it forward, so, you know, that's where I'm at, and for denial, I wouldn't be there. So, we, at this time, the chair entertain a motion?
I move that we forward this to the supervisors with the denial is incomplete. I think there are some procedural issues that have not been resolved, they need to be resolved, and I think I don't want to set a precedence either. But I move that it be forwarded as a denial.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? It was something that was said in the motion, that, not from a president's, but it was another thing. Say that again for me, the motion?
Do you want to read it back, Morgan? You don't want to read it right now. I move that we forward it to the supervisors as a denial. I think it's incomplete as far as we already know that the site plan has not been adequately reviewed.
Okay, all right. And they, who seconded it? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. All right, okay. It would be sent to the Board of Supervisors with recommendation of denial. All right. Next item? Next item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have case Z40325-6. A request by Clevengers Village LLC to amend proffers with the original approval date of January 18th, 2005, the last amended and approved on December 3rd, 2024 on property currently zoned PUD, planned unit development, known as Stonehaven Village, previously Clevengers Village. The subject proffer amendment would not alter the number of proposed dwelling units and seeks primarily to alter the layout of the development, among other minor changes to the most recently accepted proffer statement. The property is located off of Rixie to the most recently accepted proffer statement. The property is located off of Rixeville Road, Route two twenty nine and Lee Highway, Route two eleven in the Jefferson Magisterial District. It's found on tax maps three EA one and tax map seven parcels one, two A, two T, and two U. This case was approved for deferral at the applicant's request by the planning commission on March twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Okay. Is the applicant represented for the applicant here? Raise your hand. Come forth and give your full name for the record and.
I have, I have one more.
Oh, you're going to read that?
Yes, sir, I do, unfortunately. Planning department has received a revised proffer statement from the applicant, um, Clevengers Village LLC for case number Z four oh three twenty four dash six. The revised proffer statement, I'm sorry, shall be considered by the planning commission at its scheduled hearing, um, it's at the Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty five scheduled meeting. The applicant has tendered a revised proffer statement with changes since the planning commission review and last month's deferral to include the following. Um, we are at a point in our negotiations with the applicant that we're very close to, um, coming to an agreement. Can you go to the next map, please? The one area that we are discussing with the applicant and we haven't been able to finalize our discussions yet has to do with, um, the, the, uh, blue, green, and red lines you see here. Each of those line types is a road. Um, the red roads are, uh, either current or proposed roads for access to county utilities out on, uh, the property, uh, the Clevenger property. The green road is actually going to be a, um, road for access to, uh, the lake for the residents of the property. And the blue road is a road that would be constructed to, um, so that the, uh, county could access the future pump station. Um, what the applicant had come in with was a, uh, proffer amendment where they basically said that the blue road would now be a county maintained road. Um, this is because they moved houses that were running along each side of that blue road. They moved them into, uh, the interior of the, um, larger parcel. Um, and without the lots there, it could not be, um, accepted by VDOT into the state system. Um, and, uh, there were some other issues or matters of discussion with the red roads in terms of, uh, timing for paving and whatnot. Um, Mr. Howard, um, and I discussed this and he let me know that that was not a option that he was in favor of. Um, it would have put a mile to like four or five miles of road under our maintenance. Um, we don't have the facilities to do that. Uh, and so we are in discussions with the applicant at this time. This is the last item that we have to come to an agreement on. Um, we are confident that we can do that between, um, now and the board meeting in a month. But we have been discussing it. We just haven't been able to finalize the, the wording of the proffer to determine who is going to be doing what in the future for these roads. And so right now, I would have to recommend denial of it just because of that, but with the understanding that we are working very closely with the applicant. And again, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping, I would like to say by the end of the week, we would have an agreement, but definitely by, by the end of next week, we should, we should come to an agreement about what's happening out there.
Go ahead.
So, question on just timeline and procedure. Just want to make sure this is correct, um, because we've already had the one deferral. Um, obviously the applicant could ask for another deferral tonight for you all to sort out that matter. No?
Um, yes, ma'am.
They could ask.
I, I, I believe they can. Neil?
Okay, right.
My attorney says they can.
We can't, but they can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just making sure. And if basically tonight we need to act, if they don't ask for a deferral, we need to act on approval of denial because of the timeline.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we move it with, uh, the condition that in two weeks you have resolution and/or it's void? Can you do that?
You would have to make a decision of just whether or not it's denied or approved. You would put a condition that they continue working with staff to resolve the proper amendment they're proposing regarding the roads. You can specify that.
Can you tell me what discussion, what recent discussions that you've had concerning it or what direction that you're leaning, either from you or the applicant?
That's an open ended question. Um, what the applicant had proposed was that, um, the blue road, which was going to be state maintained because it used to have lots on the other side of it, was going to be county maintained. We don't have the facilities. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the money to do that, quite honestly. Um, and so that's why we said no. But we did start to have discussions with them and we, and we have gotten closer. Um, but it, it, it's not there yet. I mean, it's like I said, we are, I know the applicant is motivated. We're motivated to, to keep this project moving forward. So it's, it's going to come to a resolution that is not going to, um, impact the county monetarily. That's where we're heading.
Was it, I was just wondering if there was any discussion concerning, uh, financial obligation by the developer to basically reimburse the county, uh, for maintenance of that road?
Well, there, at the end of the day, when, when this development is finished, um, the HOA is going to own, right now, the HOA is going to own these roads. So we're, you know, our take is we were never, the county was never, had a, had never agreed to during the whole process to maintain, to own or maintain any of the roads other than the ones going to our utilities. And so we basically balked at taking another road in that for ten, fifteen years, you know, had, had always been something that was going to be in the state system. They made a choice to move the lots. We felt that it was not in our best interest to help them do that. Um, so they're having to figure out, and they have, I think they figured out how to make that happen without encumbering the county with additional costs.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. I know in some cases, a developer could be, you could determine what the cost per mile is for the, for the maintenance of that road for a certain period of time, and then they could contribute toward that as a potential contribution. I was just curious if they, if y'all had gotten to any of those discussions, but.
I think staff was pretty straightforward from the get go that we did not want to get into the road maintenance, construction business.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Thornhill.
So if the HOA is in the future going to take care of this, all right, so why wouldn't we start out with that? And maybe there's a bond posting or something, but the HOA has to do it. I mean, can you not make that the requirement? Or they're not willing to do that yet?
We are moving in that direction. It, we have not finished our discussions. And so I, you know, I've said a lot already, but we are moving in that direction.
Okay. Yes.
So the road that showed in, shown in blue is new county maintained. There's actually a tribal way there now. There's a path that winds its way through there. So, and it looks like, is, is there, is the pump station there now already? Because it looks like there's a, well, so who maintains it now?
The developer does.
All right. Uh, and the developer has offered to pave it and turn it into a road. And so I would think it would be so seldomly traveled that, I mean, how much maintenance, I mean, how much would maintenance cost once it's paved and, and there's only a few vehicles a month maybe that go out there? Because they have, the developer has, uh, agreed to let the county put gates on the roads that go to county facilities out there. So it may be almost never traveled.
I'm gonna let Mr. Howard respond to that.
Okay.
The, the blue portion of the road goes down to a pump station and would not be traveled frequently.
Yeah.
The green road and the red road that go to the utilities are traveled frequently, daily by county personnel and weekly with semi tractor trailers delivering chemicals and hauling the wasteland and everything else. So the red road and the green road are traveled frequently by everything from a tractor trailer to a truck.
All right. Uh, so it's more than just the blue road, the five thousand feet or so of?
The county is obligated to maintain the red roads. Um, that was under the original proffers and under their water and sewer agreement that went with it. Um, we recognize that when that was originally approved. That would be paved by the developer and at that point, the county would take over ownership and maintenance. Right now, the developer is maintaining those roads for us. The green road and the blue road were originally intended to be built and dedicated to VDOT. So they've moved the lots as, as Mr. Cooley mentioned. So now that road can no longer go into the VDOT system. That road would then become either an HOA or county or a combination of additional maintenance. So that represents an additional six thousand one hundred and some feet of road, which is a lot of road for the HOA or the county to maintain. So that's what we're negotiating with on them is how to alleviate or minimize that burden to the county.
But then, but the bottom line is you're close to an agreement and this is the last stumbling block to get passed to approve the new proffers and get this thing on its way. Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. So that we don't need the applicant to come up? They just wanted you to speak for them? Is that what it was? Oh, gotcha. Okay. All right. Okay.
And good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Brian Prater with Walsh, Luachi, Lublai and Walsh here tonight on behalf of Lennar. Um, here with me tonight is our team. We have Jeff Edelman and Aaron Lawrence from Lennar. We have Doug Grover, who you all are familiar with from Bowman on the civil, civil engineering side. And we also have Kevin Sitzman, our traffic consultant. We have the whole team here. Hopefully we can answer any other additional questions you may have tonight. Um, this application pertains, pertains to only the southern residential portion of Stonehaven Development. It does not include the commercial along the frontage or the underdeveloped residential portions of Stonehaven. It also doesn't include facilities and land that has already been conveyed to the county. And Lennar is seeking this proffer amendment for a few main purposes. Layout revisions, revisions to the Habitat for Humanity proffers, as well as some revisions to the transportation proffers. And some of the benefits and reasons for that proposed amendment that we'll discuss in a little more detail is reduction in overall land disturbance in the total application area, which will provide greater open space and reduce, um, or provide greater tree coverage as well as eliminate a significant stream crossing. And there will also be in relocating those lots, which I will show you in a moment here, there'll be approximately nine hundred fifty-five acres of contiguous open space on the property between the two areas and then provide funds for the Habitat for Humanity. And then this is the overall location of the property, two eleven is at the top of the screen. And then you have Rixeville Road going down the, the left-hand side. Everything in yellow is the original Stonehaven Development or the Clevengers Village proffers, about seventeen hundred acres. The area outlined in purple or red is this proffer amendment. So again, the areas that are excluded are the areas that were area three, which was dedicated to the county, area one here, which was recently dedicated to the county, the South Wales Golf Course, as well as the commercial and things under construction for the residential. And I noted a few things that are changing with this proposal. These are the items that will be changing or are proposed to be changed. And one is the Habitat for Humanity proffer. Wanted to talk through that very briefly. Currently, the proffers require eight lots to be conveyed to Habitat for Humanity of Culpeper for construction of eight units in their program. In working through the implementation of that with Habitat, the county, the applicant found that it was difficult and Habitat expressed a desire to have the funds for, um, improvements and to use elsewhere within the county and town because it's Habitat for Humanity of Culpeper rather than have the lots and build the lots. So that is one of the major changes with this proffer amendment. And the, uh, financial contribution would be a million dollars in total. And that would happen within sixty days of approval of the proffer amendment rather than the existing triggers for lots, which would be tied to the phases of development. So that would be immediately or shortly after approval. And Habitat for Humanity did write a letter of support, um, because of that change in the proffer. This is probably one of the most helpful slides that you will see showing the changes in the layout. And on the left-hand side, existing in blue is the existing layout. And this was the discussion that was happening with staff a moment ago. This is the road where there were residential lots. It was called Glastonbury Lane. And part of the relocation is removing those lots from this location and relocating them here on the west side of the golf course closer to Rixeville. And because there were residential lots serving, it would be accepted into VDOT for state maintenance. That is no longer an option. And then ensued the issue and we can touch on that in a little bit more. The other item to point out here is a relocation of the community center, which is in this area, which would be relocated a little more central to this area. And again, the reason for this is to have a little bit more efficient land planning, avoid a stream crossing and disruption to the golf course in this area that you would see here. And then also protect some of the wetlands and preserve greater open space. And this slide shows you a side by side of the environmental with the purple being the proposed disturbance or the existing disturbance under the existing layout. And then on the right-hand side, what the relocation of the lots. It's a total of about fourteen acres reduced of land disturbance as well as the significant stream crossing. You also see it's staying away from the battlefield and this archaeological resource here. So protecting those as well. And then transportation quickly, this is location seven, and that's the intersection of Rixeville and Jeffersonton. One of the proffer changes is to remove the turn lanes that were required under the proffers, their turn lanes from Jeffersonton onto Rixeville and vice versa. Um, VDOT has looked at this intersection and has determined that those improvements aren't the best fit. And a roundabout has been funded through smart scale. And that is what is envisioned for this intersection. So the turn lanes have been removed and the applicant is proposing to proffer nine hundred and fifteen hundred thousand dollars towards the location seven intersection improvements. And that estimate comes from the cost of the turn lanes that were to be installed. And then additionally, there's, there are no changes to the proffers for these intersections, but wanted to touch on because we know intersection one or location one is an important intersection within the county and has had a good amount of discussion. There wasn't a TIA included in this application. However, the applicant in connection with site plan and others has looked at the intersection and done an updated TIA as recently as two thousand four, uh, two thousand twenty-four, sorry, last year. And in, with the proposed improvements at this intersection, signal timing and turn lanes, as the development comes online, those will offset the impacts of the proposed development as well as improve some of the crash and safety of that intersection. And that, just wanted to make sure that that was relayed. Think that's an important point. And then to this, I believe there's been enough discussion on this just from the applicant's perspective. We thank staff for working with us. I think I can put on the record that for the utility roads, Lennar has expressed a willingness to have the HOA maintain, not the county, everything in green and blue and is working with county staff to come up with an appropriate bond associated with the paving of that new green and blue area. And I think we really are just working through the final tweaks of that. Again, the current proffers require the applicant developer to pave everything in red. And then that would be upon paving, maintenance. And then that would be upon paving, maintenance responsibilities conveyed over to the county on everything in red. And in this, the blue and the green, we are proposing that the applicant would still pave everything to the standard and upon paving, that would be conveyed or maintenance responsibilities would transfer to the HOA. And then the, the applicant would still provide a bond in the amount to the county for the, um, paving of this travel lane here.
Is that written somewhere?
We did express that to staff in an email. We can certainly put that into writing further.
We are, I mean, we're still working on it, but yes, ma'am, we have, we have had this discussion and is, it is in email format, I believe.
You'd be willing to proffer that, that you would do that improvement or included as part of the HOA?
Yes, the proffers would require the applicant to pave that and then also put maintenance, that Lennar would maintain it until the paving. And then at time of paving, the maintenance responsibilities would transfer to the HOA. And yes, be willing to put that into the proffers. Clubhouse relocation. There's also a minor proffer change to allow the clubhouse to be delayed one year. Currently, it's at the four hundred ninety-first, um, occupancy permit and it's within one year is the request. This would allow Lennar to provide a much higher quality product. And these are the renderings that they've been working on. And think this would be a great amenity to the future development. And then a few of the things, I'll go quickly, that are still being provided with the application remain unchanged. The school site, that's part of Area One that's already been dedicated. These are the preliminary engineering that the applicant has done and worked with the county on how the middle school and elementary school site could lay out. And the applicant does have to provide for the elementary school site, um, rough grading utilities to the site, as well as a travel way or vehicular access, I should say. Architectural elements are part of, part of the proffers, or excuse me. Covenant and restrictions are part of the proffers and those have been recorded having certain architectural evaluations. And then the few of these are the drone shots, just really to show it's a developing community. Think it will be, continue to be a great asset to the county, is a vibrant community with a golf course, the commercial along the frontage. And the ball fields with the river buffer and think it will be continuing to be a great project. And I know Lennar looks forward to keep moving on this. And that's all I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, we have any more questions?
Sure. Um, so just a clarification question for the Habitat for Humanity. I know you mentioned about that, um, you know, you'd be making a donation of about a million dollars for that. Is that, um, is that something that would benefit the county residents? Uh, in terms of that, the habitat would build in the county as opposed to the town?
So the Habitat for Humanity of Culpeper operates in the county and the town. I think one of the reasons that they were looking for funds rather than lots is they're looking to be closer to centers of business where there's walkable areas where people can walk to work. And so there is nothing currently in the proffers that would dictate where that money is applied. But Habitat for Humanity of Culpeper does work in the county and town.
Yeah, the only reason I was asked, since this is a county project, just wanted to make sure that the county is going to benefit from it more so than the town. So that's kind of why I was looking at that. Um, and then I know Mr. Grover's here. If you can touch base on the environmental features for the site in terms of stormwater management?
And I, well, while Mr. Grover is getting up here, this, it's hard to see on this, but the, there are stormwater ponds, the little blue circles shown on the existing and the proposed. And I think the observation here would be they have done, gone through the effort of preliminary engineering and done some preliminary grading. So these are where the, on the proposed side, where the stormwater would be. And there's not going to be any unknown changes to relocate some lots because they didn't evaluate potential stormwater and grading.
Gotcha. Yeah, I may not have noticed that in the slide, that's all.
My name is Doug Grover. I'm with Bowman Consulting. I'm the applicant's engineer. And to answer Mr. Kilby's question, on the slide to the right. Thank you. If.
Got to hold it, I think.
Can you help me out, Brian? Got it on the wrong way. Sorry.
Okay.
There you go. And then the top button. It takes a second.
Sorry, that. You know, the slide on the right, the proposed side. We have three facilities. We went ahead and did preliminary, you know, stormwater management designs here, here, these blue circles. And here, uh, we did the grading, sizing, went through the VRM spreadsheets, uh, made sure they were out of environmentally sensitive areas. Uh, that, these two pods here are draining to this existing blue pond, which is the irrigation pond for the golf course. And we had, uh, facilities over here, of course, uh, they would, would not be needed. Uh, this would all remain as open space. So if that answered all your questions, Mr. Kilby?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I just wanted to see how that was impacted with any environmental, like, you know, are we gonna get into wetlands or anything like that with, with them?
No, no.
We should be in good shape there.
Completely staying out of the wetlands.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Silver Dollar Lake. Was that created as a recreational feature of this development? Or was it pre-existing before, um, Clevengers and Stonehaven? And I just also want to ask, it doesn't figure anywhere into the water supply for the residents, right? All the water that will be used by the homes will come out of, out of the wells that are located around the development. Is that correct?
And as far as the first question, I believe that was contemplated. Silver Dollar Lake and Community Park was part of the original two thousand five proffers. I believe it was there. I do not want to misspeak on that. And to the well question, I would turn it over to Mr. Grover again.
I hate to get, I can get back up.
Mister.
Oh, you did the right thing.
I do not want to misspeak, but I.
Yeah, I, I noticed that there are a lot of well sites located in that part of the development. And I, uh, I, I took it from the materials that that's where the drinking water is going to come from.
There's a lot of well sites. Some of them are active wells. Um, some of them are not. Uh, they're, but they are, have been dedicated to the county. And, um, that serves the community. It fills the, it goes through the treatment plant, the raw water, you know, it's treated at the treatment plant. They pump it up to the water tank and then that pressurizes the system.
So the lake is not used as a reservoir at all?
No.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All right. The chair now opened a public hearing. Is anyone who would like to speak on this application? If so, raise your right hand. The right hand. Raise your hand and be recognized by the, by the chair. No, I'm not at that point. I don't have the robe on yet. Um. No one? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed. Oh, were you getting ready to speak?
Hello, my name is Ivan Irisari. I'm, uh, one of the neighbors of the community.
No, let me, um.
Ivan Irisari.
You're with the applicant or you?
No, I'm a.
You're a resident?
I'm a resident.
Okay. We need to reopen a public hearing then, uh, um, at this time. So, um, Chair entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing. Second, all in favor, aye? Okay, now.
So, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ivan Irisari. I live in Lindsay Court. I'm a neighbor to the community. In a previous, uh, hearing, I remember a conversation, uh, about the, the reserve areas and uh, my, my property, we, we share a boundary. So I'm just concerned about, uh, what are the plans for the future for those, those, uh, areas that have been reserved as nature reserves? And I, I remember hearing that there was going to be some sort of a, a committee that would oversee kind of like the, the buffer zones, those natural reserve areas. So it's kind of like a question as to what's going on with that.
Talking about the open space area is what he's speaking of. Um, and let me let staff, um, see what staff, um, has to say first, Brian.
I was just whispering with the zoning administrator. Um, the open space is restricted. Um, it is, uh, I think there are agreements between the, um, applicant, the builder and the county to restrict that to open space. Um, the only thing that we might see up there is Parks and Rec might have some passive type recreation, maybe trails, you know, maybe something like that. But for all intents and purposes, what you see now is, is my understanding is what it's supposed to be. It's not going to get developed. It's gonna, gonna stay as open space.
Okay.
So then, uh, a follow-up question. Is, is, is there any risk that in the future, uh, the developer may decide, no, uh, we, we want to build another development here or there or, or anything like that?
Uh, that, that will be no, because we, the county, will own that. So the developer will not be able to develop it because it will be in the name of Culpeper County.
Okay. All right.
Uh, just another brief question. Is, is there any ideas as to how to protect this natural space? If necessary, if it's going to be parks and recreation? Or I think there was a conversation at a previous hearing, maybe a couple of years ago, about some sort of a, an entity that would kind of oversee. I don't know if it was intended to be parks and recreation. I don't remember hearing that at that point. But to kind of, uh, I don't, I don't remember the exact word, but some sort of oversight.
Right.
A committee that, that would protect, make sure to look out after those, those natural reserve areas.
Yes, and, and, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I don't have personal knowledge of that, but I will work with, uh, staff, which is most of these people have been here over ten years or so. And I can actually talk to the applicant, because I'm sure we'll be talking over the next week or so, going, working through this last proffer amendment. So I will collect the information I can about that and, you know, at, at, at a future meeting. Or if you, you know, come by the office, I'll be happy to share what I find.
And that's what we want to suggest is, um, you have the opportunity to call staff and, um, and some of those questions that you ask, they would have been able to handle that for you. So, okay. But you, um, you're open to do that and follow up on things and, and all too with that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sanford, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Um, one of the things that, that for the park, the Park and Recs Department is actually looking to develop the Park and Recs area. And so that is part of the CIP, uh, currently is funding seventy-five thousand dollars to the county to look at that area and do master planning for that area. So that area is currently in, um, will be looked at this upcoming year. So I just want to add that so that you're aware of that. Because the Park and Recs Advisory Committee and the Park and Recs Director would be overseeing and looking at that area. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can, can I clarify with staff or the applicant?
Go ahead.
Um, just for me, maybe as well as the neighbor. Um, the park area is at the lower portion on an Area One. Well, not Area One, but, and that, but the blue road area will become ownership of the HOA.
So, yeah, so Area One is where the school sites would be. That's already been conveyed to the county. Area Three is the River Preserve. That's also already been conveyed to the county. Area Two, which the label for it is just off-screen here, is this area under this dash line. That has to be conveyed to the county prior to or concurrent with recordation of the subdivision plan that has the four hundred ninety-first unit. So that is forthcoming to the county as well. And then this area is currently Area Four. That is envisioned as open space that would be maintained by the HOA and retained by HOA ownership.
But Mr. Cooley is correct. It, it'll remain as it is, um, as, as open space.
Correct. It's open space and the Silver Dollar Lake Community Park.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Going once. Declare a public hearing closed. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant and, um, and from, um, uh, a few of the citizens, uh, at this time, the chair entertain a motion? Okay.
Uh, well, I guess I have a question for the attorney. I just want to make sure that I understood this correctly. So I mean, to me, following precedent, basically like we did on the last one here, you know, there, there's still this one big detail that has not worked out yet. So I feel like for us to send it forward with a caveat, you know, depending on this piece i- is not going to be correct because that sense, that just basically nullifies what we did in terms of precedent. So a- am I right i- in that assumption? And that basically at this point, because there has been no request for deferral, we need to either approve or deny as is? Okay. So basically, at this point, as a commission, our options, because the applicant has not requested another deferral, our options as a commission is to approve or deny the application as is. We cannot have a caveat in there of pending the, the county conversation. That's hopefully getting worked out here soon.
Does the applicant want to, uh, request a deferral?
Can we, um, the attorney, you, you, um, what is this? Okay. So we can get it right.
You're absolutely correct. You can either deny it or you can affirm it. If you, if you wanted to affirm it with, uh, you know.
Condition.
Some language saying that, you know, that in the end, there has to be this particular thing resolved where, you know, what they can offer and as far as the HOA being responsible for the ongoing maintenance on that particular portion of the road that's changing in the proffers has to be, you know, worked out. And that's fine. What we're dealing with in that other case was a completely different thing where it was a, a higher site plan. So this is, and again, part of this, just so you all know, we had been literally yesterday afternoon where we were trying to, you know, hammer out a lot of these details. It's not their fault. It's just we're trying to get a large group of people together to have all these discussions. It's sometimes a little bit tricky as far as scheduling that. And we weren't able to do that much before yesterday because of everyone's schedule, including mine.
Okay.
Uh, you know, that's up to you all. If you want to put, if you want to put some sort of terminology in there that says that, you know, we could, you approve it, but.
With the condition?
You know, if we're required to this be hammered out as far as, because they have been writing.
We just started. I think.
Have agreed to what the county was asking for, you know. I think that makes this a little different than, than the other situation. If that makes sense.
All right. Okay, we've, um, heard that and, and I appreciate you, um, um, explaining to us the, the difference kind of between the two cases because, um, or the previous and, and this and, um, um, going forward with it. So.
Yeah, well, this is a detail that they've already pretty much agreed to. It's just a matter of coming up with the right language. And part of that's going to be me. And, and I'll tell you why that is. Um, you know, when we're dealing with HOAs, I'm always, I always personally have a concern.
Yes.
In the future, HOAs may or may not be in existence. They may cease to exist. So.
Okay.
I want some sort of language in there that, you know, if that happens, stance happens.
All right.
Which it can and it has, um, you know, but then what?
Okay.
So we need to have some bargaining or we need to have some sort of assurance that.
Sure.
Will fall back on the county.
Got you.
If they cease to exist.
Okay.
So we just have to, as lawyers, we'll try to parse through how's worth that.
Okay.
Help protect everybody, them, us, everybody.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Got that clarification? And at this time, Mr. Wilks?
So there's not a concern at all about a precedent being set or any confusion coming from us looking at this?
I don't think so. So, because again, they've already been writing that they're. that they're agreeable with the requirements that the county is asking. It's a matter of coming up with the right language to make it work.
Okay. The other thing that was brought up, and I thought was a good point, was the million dollars, making sure that it's available to the county and doesn't go to the town. Is that a concern that we need to address at some level or is it?
I mean, I, what is, did staff consider that or discuss that when the applicant?
No, this is a benefit to county residents and town residents or county residents also.
County residents or county residents?
So I, 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 my thinking would be there are going to be some in the town, but they're also going to be, I think they're probably going to be more in the county. When I was at my last job, we did two or three in town while they did six in the county. So, I mean, it, it, it balanced out.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? At all? Chair entertain a motion?
I can make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, sir.
Regarding case number Z403-25-6, Stonehaven Development, I recommend approval of request by Clevenger's Village LLC to amend the profers, proffers previously agreed to by Syntex Homes with the original approval date of January 18th, 2005, and last amended and approved on December 3rd, 2024 on the property currently zoned, planned unit development known as Stonehaven Village, previously Clevenger's Village.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
So no language in regards.
You're correct.
Okay, go right ahead.
Am I amending my motion or just moving forward?
You have that opportunity now.
With the condition that the applicant and the county will, both parties will agree to a mutually agreeable solution to the maintenance of the roads in question.
Okay. Who seconded?
Utility roads.
Who had seconded?
Second.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Okay, we will send it forward with recommendation of approval.
Move to adjourn.
All right, Chair entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.